Ready?
No, Eric, tonight or you don't know.
I have not heard it.
He said this afternoon, I thought he was cutting.
That's done.
All right, the meeting of the public hearing for Monday, December ninth, twenty twenty four, for the city of Ellsworth, will be called a order. Let's go and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, into this world with liberty and justice for all. All right, Destiny, you want to go ahead and go through the proposed amendment?
Um, we were just, Angela, I could use your help with this, please. We, uh, we had a little confusion over, uh, I gave the library the amount that they had last year, and thanks to Marianna's training with the Clerk's Institute, we did confirm the research. We actually have to give the library one if they ask for it by statute. So that's one of the big reasons why we didn't pledge the amendment.
Well, and the other reason was firing police got earned more interest. And to close out that fund, which I want to be done with that fund in twenty twenty four, I had to amend it so I can spend it. And so I need you guys to approve it so that we can spend everything that's in that fund and get rid of that fund for next year. And then we got actually more money from the county than what we budgeted for at the library. So I would like to give them all of that money as well, but I can't spend that unless you approve the amendment.
Yeah, so you want to go ahead and make a motion to open the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move to open the public hearing for the December ninth public hearing. Ready?
I'll second. Counselor Coates has made a motion to open the public hearing for, uh, the proposed amendment A R dash twenty four dash two forty one. Counselor Panzer has seconded that motion. Hearing done, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Would anybody like to come forward and speak about the budget amendment? All right, seeing no one is, is ready to come forward, need a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close it?
All right, Counselor Panzer has made a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Counselor Coates has seconded that motion. Hearing done, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion for adjournment.
Make that a motion, would you?
Counselor Panzer has made a motion for adjournment.
I'll second.
Counselor Coates has seconded that motion. Hearing done, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Our motion carries. So the public hearing is now closed and adjourned. So we'll get back to it at five thirty. The right of consent agenda includes plain ordinance eight zero one dash one one two four and the approval of the November twenty fifth regular council meeting minutes.
Can you back up? Just to the agenda part, can I make a motion to remove
Okay.
the government ethics line from the agenda?
Counselor Coates has made a motion to remove the government ethics part from the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hanson has seconded that motion. Any debate? All right, hearing done, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All right. All right, we'll go ahead and move on, okay? Then the other part of it is, uh, the present agenda, we have the approval of the November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four minutes.
Are there any water sewer combinations at this meeting? Or that's just up to you guys to weigh those, okay?
Anybody see anything? Uh, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Councilor Nards has made a motion to approve the consent agenda. Counselor Hanson has seconded that motion. Any debate? Concerns? All right, hearing done, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Our motion carries. Next section of our meeting is petition of the delegations. You will have had to have signed up before, um, right now, and we'll go, I think we had four on the list last time I checked. Everyone has to, uh, basically say whether they're Ellsworthian resident. Uh, they've got five minutes unless, uh, the governing body has further questions. So I think I was first on the list, so.
Um, my name's Dan Fennigan, two oh one Forest Drive, have lived in Ellsworth since twenty nineteen. Uh, title of this little just speech is what you call it, is leadership versus hate. One of the basic tenets of leadership is for the leader to strive to find a way forward, no matter how hard the task. Without hesitation, we can all agree that engaging in different types of hatred doesn't help us reach our goals. As humans, we will all succumb to hated times in our lives, including myself and everybody here. But great leaders realize that hate is a cycle. One hate-filled act a word just leads to another. Ultimately, it is up to leaders to realize this and get out of their business. A person doesn't always have to be right or always win. Sometimes leaders purposefully let others win in order to break the cycle. Tonight, let's hope you're going to witness leadership and no hate. We should reflect on the futility of hate, but before we say things we regret and take actions that have far-reaching consequences. As a community, we have in our power to be great, but that will all be lost if we don't break the cycle of hate. Before our eyes, we're seeing signs of greatness and signs of decay in Ellsworth. Will a company come here if there's hate and a lack of a strong ethical foundation? The answer is simply no. The word always gets out to those who have the power to decide such matters. Maybe the staff meltdown that we experienced in twenty twenty four and the immediate aftermath was a warning. We need to heed the warning, stem the tide of hate, and learn from these experiences. We have the power to lead or the power to destroy. I hope tonight we start to turn the corner. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, who would like to go next?
I would.
Mary, come on up.
Oh, you have to go. I'm wanting to apologize for my failure for her. Um, I want you to know that Don Panzer let me know that he was, he wanted to apologize for his actions on the last, at the last meeting. We unhand it, hand my paper and he had angering to play with it up and we apologized for that. And he wrote to me, um, good afternoon, I do want to apologize for my actions. I was just so stressed that it came for does the meaning to his resigning. I'll pick him up forward for the sake of the city and its citizens. We all need to do better. If you mind answering your question again at the next meeting, I will apologize and have a full answer for you. I'll just put an end to all the hate back and forth. And did you know that many of clouds, et cetera, et cetera, um, coming down to, um, big placement on the cloud side and it's like that our families are related. And then he wished my husband and I a happy Thanksgiving. If you want to say what you were going to say, done. I am ready to do that now before I continue, or I can just continue on.
I'll say it now because, uh, for respect for you and was her name Terry Pruitt here at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And I've had a lot of other people ask me since the meeting was going on, the Decreasy Park deal. So I went back and looked. In January, February, we started a spring committee this spring. Jessica was on it. I was on it. Pete was on it. Uh, Dave Koss was on it. Uh, Mike, were you on that? Mike Walsh?
I was there.
You were there at those meetings. Judy Sherman, quite a few people from that area were there. And so we put our heads together. We come up with the idea if we can raise the dirt level on that and two feet and then raise the brim two feet, we would maintain the same flood protection, but yet have a soil base where the springs are coming up through the ground. We sent that over and talked to KDOT about it. And the response from KDOT's slide was, we don't know how much water we can allow to back up against Highway forty. That would be the highway to the door. Okay, so then I thought, well, we're not getting anywhere. I contacted Troy Waymaster. He's our representative from Buckler Hill. And he said he would do a search for investigation, not really an investigation, but ask some questions of KDOT where we are on that solution. And he says they have not come up with a plan yet as of August first. Or he has not heard anything back. He said we're going to have to probably wait until after the election because we're still waiting for the FEMA flood control maps for our whole area, which is going to affect that lagoon, that I call lagoons, but the Creasy Park watershed. Corrective if I'm wrong, but didn't they say it happened like in June originally?
Yeah, it keeps getting pushed.
Yeah, and then it was going to be August. And now it's going to be December first, and we still don't have the FEMA maps. They are running that far behind. So as of right now, I talked to um, Troy Waymaster again since he got reelected and he said he'd get right on this again. But he says the state has their hands tied until they get the FEMA floodplain uh, results because as of right now, that situation's not even in the floodplains for Ellsworth. So whatever water that collects up there, and actually, last word I got, it doesn't affect anything downtown yet because they haven't recognized it as a flood project. Is that right?
No, we, we worked with Kirk and Michael to submit those to the flood, to.
Okay, so I think maybe it's limited, but have they haven't given us our map back yet from?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to say, but it's a little bit over my head. So basically, we've worked on it the whole year. And with, uh, what? Oh, okay, we've worked on it the whole year and basically I'm waiting on Troy Waymaster, which is no problem as I understood. He said, let's wait till after election, make sure before I get everything stirred up that I didn't get reelected. And he said, we have to wait for FEMA. So we've been sitting here over a year and still waiting for FEMA to respond before we know what we can do. And basically, do you have anything else to add to that, Destiny?
I'm still waiting.
Still waiting, so that's where we are. It's not like we gave up on it or no one didn't do anything. When you're dealing with the government, I bet you can imagine what works that year.
Yes, um, so it's a good thing that you explained it because now being the paper and everybody in town will know what's going on.
Yeah, but and, and all fairness back to me, when someone approaches me in anger and hate, I'm not going to respond to it, but I will apologize because I didn't respond and I wanted your paper last week. That was my
reaction.
That was my reaction.
To what happened earlier, like you can have a home here.
Yeah, so all of this is, I hope answers your question.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Okay, oh, Ben, I've got some more orders and I know that Dawn had got some in my time, so I, I my wife, hold my friends, please. Um, Dustin, I do not know, nor did I ever want you to leave. I do not know, nor did I ever celebrate the leaving. I do know that I was not alone when I wrote to ICMA. I know nine people who also wrote separate complaints. It wasn't to discredit you. It was because the tenants weren't being all of it. Nine different people that I know of, or many more. I don't know. It's always mine. But I want to know that I did not ever start out doing anything to make you leave. Okay. I did write something on social media to blame me because I thought, okay, I'm going to help protect her mayor, the innocent. Well, that's why I'm mean. I do not, and I do not seek to do any malicious harassment. I specifically did not, did provide evidence and proof that's supported each allegation to ICFA, which is the proper way to go and the proper establishment to go to. It was not something that you go through police, a level of police or anything like that. And I had somebody write back in the hand, one of the things in the paper that, you know, you go to the police. Well, no, that's not how it works. If you look up and see what you do it, that's not how it works. For me, my biggest thing was if you can't run a business, how can you run a city? Another is whether you know or not know about a cover-up and doing nothing about it. Either way, it is a direct violation of tenants and that's what I was that was what I was doing. It was nothing against you personally, but that's what I was doing. So the animosity of the last ten, eleven months would never have been if the right thing had been done back in October and November twenty twenty three, when questions were asked and were answered. This whole thing, this whole mess, the last ten to eleven months would never have been as often as it will. I don't know how, some of you don't see how this actually came about, but that is how it looks. That's how it came about. The cover-up would know.
Very, very good.
One.
Go ahead.
One, please. I know that there's were problems and I'm going to do what I can to help clean up city hall because that's the only way forward we can. I also am going to say, Lord, please help this town feel and get past what is left to come forth from this entire embezzlement issue in your glorious name. Amen.
That is very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Very nice. All right, Cindy, Cindy Miller, come on up.
Five minutes. Do you tell Joanne notice you have five minutes? I'm going to read this fast. Some of it's my words and some of it's wisdom from a very dear friend of mine, not even from this county or state. I truly, I started out with Proverbs. My name is Cindy Miller and, um, three oh three Missouri residency from Kansas for probably forty seven, fifty years, however many. Not mentioning any names in due respect to your city attorney. Proverbs twenty seven seventeen, iron sharpens iron and a man sharpens another. I truly do not know that I should be up here tonight. There are many more knowledgeable people who are better qualified, one of which I met today in person and online a week or two ago. I am one out of I don't know how many in this town that in itself is sad. As every person counts, their ideas, their encouragement, their support is needed and quite frankly, it is needed more than when there is an issue that has been brought to light. I feel like a complete hypocrite standing here tonight because I'm about to talk about something that I feel as the council does, that the proof needs to be either brought out or dropped because of lack of evidence. We are privileged as citizens to stand here and share with you our voice. The council who put in so many hours, I just say thank you. That all said, I know that one person in the past or two or three, in the past eight to ten months, has spoke a lot on how things should be done or how you may not be doing things correctly. There was an incident of embezzlement with said person who embezzled, saying there was more corruption. Said person was not allowed to speak afterward after losing none of her position, which left some thinking that there was a cover-up. Which led into personal investigations that led to reports being made, right or wrong, on how it was done. It was done, and in doing so, there has been a lot of venting on Facebook. I'm not sure I understand why there has not been charges brought against some, especially to those who have been slandered, the innocent people, in my opinion. To the city and the council, I ask, are we upset as a city because there was an email saying there's more corruption and it's being taken seriously or because it's being done in the wrong orders? I understand that things are trying to be brought out and brought forward. I see a lot of statements from citizens that have caused people to believe that some are controlling what others say. From what I see and read, the people commenting are people who have lived in this city long before many of you council members ever arrived here. They are people of their own character. Myself and the citizens are not in the closed-door executive meeting, so we know way too little of what is going on in depth to be running our thoughts aloud on Facebook, making trouble for our city. I believe we can trust each and every one of you that sit on that board with how you are handling things. For any of us to make you feel less than you are or feel you are doing things inappropriately or out of order, shame on us. Our council puts in long hours and work with more than this last recent happening. I'm sure like me, you would like to get back to business and not have us in the way of doing what needs to be done. The problem is not our mayor. The problem is not our city administrator. And heck, it isn't even the incident at hand. It's an ongoing opinion of some that the council don't know what they are doing or how they run things. To those people, it's my opinion. You believe you know everything and believe you started out doing well, but somewhere along this line, it got derailed. And I have been that person to you in the past, and I apologize publicly for that. With all that is going on, I don't know how our city attorney or our council, council, um, has the time to do their job because of all that's being done and said. They have restrictions now on our mayor, feel like you guys have restrictions on our mayor, and you are now rewriting rules and regulations to be more clear so that we as citizens don't violate duty, council. And I think that's the right thing. Not sure about on the mayor's part, but I really like how you're revamping. There are so many moving parts operating a city such as the water distribution, waste, water treatment, police, and fire emergency management, roads, sidewalks, parks, and recreations, and wants and needs of the community. Community, state and federal law mandates with compliance such as EPA regulations. I'm about done. Do you want me to finish?
Yeah, just a few more, a few more sites, but.
ADA ADA requirements and the list goes on. The funds collected through the sales and property tax and the application for grants that gets the job done over a time. As the council, it's important that you collect funds to achieve the goal that, uh, yeah, keep collection low enough to continue to make living in our community affordable. Everyone has an opinion of what needs to be done and how it should be done, and you will never make everyone happy. Unanticipated emergencies, repairs can be difficult to budget for, but often need to be addressed. Day-to-day operations and employees are easily planned to get the work done in future development and its funding can be difficult to navigate. You have over a thousand people, but people have over a hundred different ideas and try to make those ideas a reality. None of those ideas will ever come to light if you try to please all of us. None of it will get done. If everything is important, nothing is important.
Okay, you have six minutes.
Last line.
Okay, great, thank you.
A united front makes a stronger city.
Well said. Thank you. Very nice. All right, so Karen, you want to come up?
We be counsel, Mr. Mayor, Dustin. Um, I am interested in the item on the agenda about our building on North Douglas. May I speak as part of that discussion or would you prefer I address now?
So Karen?
Yes.
So I want to interject because I think you had some contact today when you're planning on recommending a staff, a sixty day, um, suspended on August. So.
That's fair. I just want to be sure. Yeah, I was, right, so I just don't, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to be part of it. I just want to be sure involving your preferences as council, so.
Does sound good. Sixty days?
Well, you guys have a vote, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Just may I, may I comment if I have any questions at that point, at that point?
Yeah, absolutely. That's fine. Thank you.
Perfect. So I'm deferring my minute. Yes?
To the agenda, we got.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, so that's it. It was the four, right? Okay, very good. Well said, everybody. Um, on to unfinished business. And this is the consideration of combination of three oh four North Douglas Avenue, resolution twenty twenty four dash thirty two. Destiny, you want to talk about this?
I'm going to, I'm going to divert this to our baby spectrum.
Okay.
Uh, last couple of days, the owners have re-engaged with us and they're willing to work. They need sixty days more days. They're requesting, and I think we should grant it.
They're willing to work with us.
Yeah.
I want to hear if Karen wanted to comment. Come on up. Yeah, now's your chance.
Um, no, I just wanted to be sure that we had plenty of time and I just wanted to be sure that there is some sort of, you know, before any action is taken, that there is, um, an engineering report, an engineering inspection. There's, we're making decisions based with really solid data and evidence. And so I just, um, I know it's hard for you because you're not the building owner and hard for me because I, as the publisher of the newspaper, not the building owner, I just want to be sure we're making decisions based on that.
Yeah, they face the guarantees, even though they need to work with.
Perfect.
I have a question. Did they say anything about ever going to hire structural engineers like that or any?
An engineer.
An engineer, okay. Just long as somebody knows a lot more about it than any of us.
Yeah, no, that's.
Because there's no way we could stand.
I agree. Yes, there's.
Yeah, there's no way we could stand there and say, well, this is bad, that's bad, that's got to go. We're not trained for it or educated for it.
No, that won't, yeah.
Yeah, that somebody knows what's really going on.
And that was all my request was, was to be sure that somebody who's qualified with the credentials is, is helping
Yeah.
guide the decision.
I don't want to make that decision. That has to have it fall in or whatever. Hey, thank you.
That it, devil? Thank you. Yeah, okay.
I would just need a motion to.
I'll make a motion that we extend it for sixty days.
I know.
All right.
Are we extending the consideration or what exactly?
The consideration for sixty days, my regulation twenty twenty four thirty two.
I'll second.
All right, Counselor Panzer has made a motion to, uh, extend the resolution, uh, twenty twenty four dash thirty two for sixty days. Uh, President of the Council Coates has seconded that motion. Um, any debate about this? Any concerns?
I would just say if they get the engineering report done ahead of time, might bring it to us some more.
So if they get an engineering report before that, just bring it to us and we'll, we'll, we'll address it then.
I, I won't receive that report.
Right.
That would probably.
Right, yeah, let us know. All right. Hearing done, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, moving on to the National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Proclamation.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, uh, little background, you gentlemen like to speak first or, yeah?
Uh, yeah, so I'm with V vec, um, David, I'm U that giving V back. I'm, I'm Marlin on the econ and housing now, we table the V back. Say of so you want us to go and read it or?
You can just tell us a little bit about it maybe and, and then I can read it. You can read it?
I mean.
Just want to read it? Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so the National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month proclamation of January, uh, twenty twenty five. Whereas millions of men, women, and children are victims of human trafficking, which is the second largest and fastest growing criminal industry in the world. Whereas human trafficking denies victims basic human dignity, freedom, and it's based on recruiting, harboring, transporting people through the use of force, fraud, and/or coercion for the purpose of sexual exploitation or forced labor. It is a crime that can take many forms and tear our social fabric, the base of our common humanity, and violate what we stand for as a country. Whereas traffickers frequently, frequently target victims and then use violent threats, lies, false promises, debt bondage, and other forms of control and manipulation to force, to force victims to work against their will or to keep victims involved in commercial sexual exploitation. Whereas the United States Justice Department has identified Kansas as an originating state for human trafficking and most trafficking in Kansas involves local children. Whereas, which improved, uh, with improved victim identification, medical and social services, training for first responders, and increased public awareness, the victims who have suffered this cruel crime can overcome. Training for first responders and increased public awareness, the victims who have suffered this cruel crime can overcome the bonds. Of modern day slavery, receive protection and justice and successfully reclaim their right, their rightful independence. And whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas is joining forces with. Victim service providers, criminal justice officials, uh, concerned citizens throughout the central Kansas and the United States to observe. National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Together commit to a society where our sense of justice tells us that. Now we can eradicate this wrong and continue to fight for human dignity and the rights of every person. Now therefore, the City Ellsworth Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-five as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. And applaud the efforts of many victim service providers, police officers. Prosecutors, national community organizations and private sector supporters for the efforts in opposing human trafficking and all its forms.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, we'll get a quick picture, how's that? Start saying we take pictures. Mr. Mayor, we got a, yeah, proclamation up here. So maybe I'll go ahead and sign it for you, then we'll shake hands and. Mariana, you're gonna sign it too. I gotta move in here. Thank you. You know, you just want to hold this? What's that you're doing?
One, two, three. Got it.
Basically, sure. Okay, so great, so we gotta do a second one, right?
Yeah.
All right, do we get?
Okay, so this one is the national, uh, National Stalking Awareness Month, January twenty twenty-five. Where a stocking is intentionally intentional harassment, a pattern of behavior directed at a specific person, causing that. That person to feel fear and endangerment of the, of, for themselves or their family. Whereas under the law, law of Ellsworth County, Kansas, and all juris- jurisdiction in the United States, stalking is a crime. Whereas the maturity of victims. Of victims are stopped by someone, someone that know typically an ex dating partner or acquaintance. And three or four women killed, killed by intimate partner have been stopped by the same intimate partner. Whereas the stat, the statistics do not represent the true. Perpetual, uh, prevalence of stalking and, and multiple reasons, including, including not all victims report the crime to law enforcement. Whereas many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs and are obtaining protection order. Whereas many stalking victims lose time from work, experience serious psychological distress. And lost productivity at much higher rate than the general population. Whereas um, communities can be combated stop, stalking by raising awareness, adopting.
Multi, uh, disciplinary.
Multidisciplinary response by teams of, of other local agencies. Now therefore, the City of Ellsworth Board of Com- Commissioners does hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-five the National Stalking Awareness.
Mr. Mayor, we got, got an affirmation. Take one more. Thank you, appreciate you, thank you. And then we'll have our chief of police talk about it, uh, when he knows about it here, or maybe, thank you guys so much.
At that time of the agenda is the twenty twenty-four budget amendment approval. Agenda item report twenty-four dash two forty-one.
Mr. Mayor, we're just asking for official approval of the stuff we discussed in the public meeting.
I'm just a little curious, so. We're not going to use that extra money in the fire equipment, click stunt, right?
No, we're, the intention is to close it out.
Okay, and that's going to go to our library, and then did you say?
No, the fire is, is the fire, uh, fire going to its library until I think that's.
No, they're.
They're separate.
Okay, they're separate, okay.
Yeah, the funds are separate funds.
Okay.
So like the fire and police, they, that fund earned an extra interest on money that we invested, but we spent it out. Um, and so to finish spending that little bit of extra interest, I need to have approval from you guys.
Okay, is that extra interest going in for the library?
No, it's nothing to do with the library.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, it's its own separate things.
Sure.
And then, you said that we're getting more money from the county, you said?
We'll have one more distribution from the county.
So.
And this week, I'll, I'll, I'll be asking for it to see if they have it ready. And that'll be like motor, uh, motor vehicle tax. So that could bring in more money into the library's time.
Okay.
And so I want to be able to turn around and give that to the library once I received it from the county.
Do you think we'll still have a deficit though?
No.
Okay, that's.
We have more than enough, I just want to be able to give them the money.
We just, we just need to make it legal to do it then.
Yes, I can't write any checks, pay them to you.
Have a deficit one way or the other.
No, I just have too much money that, that I need to get rid of. I guess that's a bad thing.
The best statute we do have to give, we, what we learned from this experience. Was that whenever the library would request a certain amount, we do have the statutory, statutory obligation.
Very good, I'll make a motion. Agenda item report twenty-four two forty-one. Make the motion to be able to use those funds.
One second.
All right, Councilor Panzer has made a motion to make the uh. Budget amendment uh, for twenty twenty-four, those funds available, Councilor Hanson has seconded that motion, any debate, any concern? All right, hearing non-holds barred, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, looks like we had resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, that is the twenty twenty-five fee schedule.
We're just making an update, Mr. Mayor, uh, that we are now adding a rental fee for the mobile message board for the police department.
And then this one will be.
Is it a different number?
Yeah, it'll be thirty-two since we didn't pass. The condemnation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution two zero two four dash three two, an amendment to the twenty twenty-five fee schedule.
I'll second.
Counselor Renard has made a motion to uh, amend the resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two to amend the twenty twenty-five fee schedule. Um, Councilor Coats has seconded that motion, any questions?
So what did it, what, what came to the on, what did it go to? Twenty dollars a week, go ahead. We get printed out or?
We're about to find out, usually just someone would call and we take it to them, now we're actually going to be doing.
Oh, gotcha. My only question.
We got a motion over here.
Yes.
Ready, so you ready to vote? Okay, so hearing non-holds barred, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, next item on the agenda is dinner item report twenty-four dash two forty-four, the Patrick Hoffman Attorney Services Ag- Agreement Amendment. Sorry, oh yeah, moving quick, um, let's go back, so resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four, the boundary resolution, go ahead Dustin.
Well. I have a few questions too, I helped draft the boundary resolution, so I came out of time. So earlier this year, the city identified some land around the airports that hadn't been formally annexed into the city, so we did that annexation process. There's a statute that says any year in which the city adds or subtracts from the city boundaries, we are to do a resolution at the end of the year saying what our boundaries are. So that is what this is, it's just a reflection of, hey. We added that airport land, so it is also kind of a piece here for us to clean up, but the statute requires us to say what our boundaries are.
Okay.
That's just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I also wanted to add, this is also some of Delvin's site, plus suffer one of his additional duties, I am working on this under administration. Part of his job is going over our maps and finding inconsistencies, that's partly how we found the discrepancy with the, with the airport.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the corporate bounty resolution as resolution two zero two four dash three three.
All second. All right, Counselor Renard has made a motion, Counselor Johnson has seconded that motion for the boundary resolution twenty twenty-four dash three three, any other questions about it? All right, hearing non-holds barred, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, next item on the agenda is the Patrick Hoffman Attorney Services Agreement and Amendment. Agenda item report twenty-four dash two four four, go ahead Patrick.
Yeah, um, at the beginning of the year, I responded an RFP for this job, enjoyed it, I've enjoyed it greatly, it's a. Something I like to do, uh, it's always my intention to get it through a year or roughly a year. And uh, see what my contract should be adjusted to in December, in my opinion. Um, so it's clarification in terms of some things I've got feedback from in terms of if I'm asked by a government body member. To draft ordinance, I will draft that ordinance and then you guys discuss it, I know that's come up a couple of different times when a. Single member of the government body asks me to work on something, so I clarified in there that I do that. I clarified, uh, because we did have a situation last May where I wasn't. Reappointed by the uh, mayor, I put in there that if I'm not reappointed, but the council hasn't named my successor, I'll stay on until there's a smooth transition or until something happens. It's important for me ethically, we have rules of attorneys, I can't just leave my client high and dry, I have to make sure a succession happens, so I, that's why I put there. And I raise it two hundred and fifty dollars, to be honest, a month, so.
Some, some training, different things, right?
I did have some training to it, yeah, I did have the train, thank you. Uh, that's the I M L A light, which is a, it's just like the other, the one that managers do, I've kind of started using it as a resource for returns. And I asked that to be added to, as a resource. Um, I just want to say additionally, just because I'm here today at the busiest meeting with everybody, I do a lot of different government body work. Uh, and usually when I'm in a meeting where there's a lot of people, I don't know where any of the faces in the crowd. One of the things I love about Ellsworth is special to me is like, I know. A lot of these people, I know where they are and where they're from and have history with them, so it's just nice to work for a city that I have a little connection to. That's all I have.
So what makes you want to work with Ellsworth for another year?
Well, my, my parents live there still, so it's great to be with them, and I think the next year of Ellsworth, we've got a lot of things to accomplish. A lot of good things going on, I've got a long history with a lot of the cabinet government body members and enjoying working with them. So obviously there's challenges, everyone is, we're all aware of what those are, um, but it's gonna get back in.
Thank you, I like it. All right, need a motion and?
I'll make a motion for Patrick's Attorney Service Agreement amended, uh, twenty-four two forty-four. We approve that?
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately, yes.
All second. All right, Counselor Panzer has made a motion to approve the Patrick Hoffman Attorney Services Agreement. Effective immediately, and Counselor Johnson has seconded that motion, any questions or concerns? All right, hearing non-holds barred, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries. Uh, next thing, we got the cereal malt beverage and liquor license business requirements amendment, ordinance three one six five. Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna give this to Patrick or Mariana if you need to talk on this.
I thought I'd stay at the podium so I don't have to pop back out, Mariana, I did probably two hundred percent on this one and probably did. And I, there might be questions about this one in the next few, I'll just stick up here for a while.
I'm just hanging on, okay, um, so reading through our code and working with Penny and Jeffrey. With implementing the inspections that is required by our code that we haven't been doing for our C and B and our liquor licenses. Um, we're just finding a lot of oddities that don't necessarily need to be in there. Um, like our retail locations being required to have two separate bathrooms, um, different bathroom requirements. This one in front of you removes that bathroom requirement. Um, and it also updates our legal drinking age to twenty-one instead of eighteen. Yeah, it's just same words, so, um, and then we cleaned up. The felon employment portion, um, to reflect. More so not to employ somebody that would be disqualified from holding. A C and B license based on felonies, um, so. Prior, it just read that no felon was allowed to be employed by anybody that had a C and B or a liquor license. Um, we updated it so that it's consistent with K S A twenty-one. Twenty-seven oh three D two, which has a, a time limit to how, how long you have to wait to employ a felon. Um, so just updating some consistencies with that. Um, really this one was so that we can approve the amp pride. Last week, or at our last meeting, we, we amended so that we can approve Quick Shop based on their. Um, distance regulations, this one is so that we can approve the amp pride because they only have one bathroom. And then while I was in it, I figured we might as well update age and the felony requirement. Um, and then Patrick and I have a plan to go through and revamp all of these and combine them and clean them up. And then this year.
Well, and they also alcohol, so they're within so many yards of the daycare center too.
And that one, I grandfathered in on that last amended.
Make sure they're included on that.
I included things and amp pride on that last one.
We talked about last time, but what happened was C and B used, there used to be a beer that was three two and C and B, and then when they changed that law, it changed our whole. It just changed a lot of things and there's a lot of moving parts, I, I also like, I would like to say real quick that Mariana going to include this up is a really great thing and I appreciate it. And I'm gonna give some of the credit, I think, to Dustin because he's reorganized the, the way things are going on downstairs. I was thinking earlier today, like, why did you not catch this earlier, and I think some of it was just that the clerk had. So many duties that weren't clearly defined previously that they couldn't always get to it, so. And I also appreciate the chief of police doing the inspection talk.
So what's the timeline on the felon part?
And so that's, you, Karen asked me this earlier, previously our ordinance just said, no, we can't employ a felon, it was really vague and broad. What I understood, what we did, the way I drafted it was to say, no felonies, i- if you can't work for the state, you know. C and B has licensed state and local, you have to jump in both hoops. So when I wrote it, Aaron, I kind of drafted it in case this, in case the state shifts what they do, and we sort of amended, but it'll always be like two years generally. And then there might be certain kinds of felonies that are pretty rare, but like. Belongingly running a club or something, it was, it was something I found, um, in which those game, those people are barred forever from having a low license because their crime was related to alcohol.
Yeah, and just to prevent any future headaches, is lottery considered gambling?
I know where this is going.
Yeah.
Sorry, I have, there's that in advance, so. We need to research that and come back.
Kind of well.
I, I want to follow in terms of felonies, what the state's guidance, I want to match up, my proposal is to match our guidance with who can do it with what the state says. Because otherwise you could have a situation where the State Department of Revenue says someone can sell, but our code is different, and I think what we would probably. I think generally the community say, well, if the state says you're okay, why does Ellsworth have a higher standard, so I'd like to match their interpretation.
Yeah, I, I know your intention of gambling isn't meaning lottery, but I'm just saying if somebody else.
Lottery felony?
Well.
Yeah. That was probably the old code that we pulled through, so I don't know the answer. So you can, we can bring it back next month, time to be.
Not to, if you're not concerned about it, I'm, I'm not, I'm just.
I'm not, not wholly concerned about it, but I have a little, I have a little research for, for the city and make sure we're okay, how about that?
Can, can we agree to. Define it more when we revamp and do all of the things?
Yeah, well, the revamp that is coming, we need to do this because people have a license that, that comes due soon. Um, I worked for a different client and we did a revamp that included things that we don't even have right now, but we could, like microbreweries, wineries, a whole list of kind of. Uh, alcohol related businesses that didn't really exist five or ten years ago, that don't currently exist, but if one popped up tomorrow, we probably want to support them, help them, I would guess. Uh, but we want to make sure we have a code in advance for how to deal with that. So that's really what the project area I was talking about that we kind of want to work on, and I think that would be the right time to open that up.
But un- unfortunately with how our code is written, if we don't pass this ordinance, we can't approve the amp pride. To carry their C and B.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. I move to approve ordinance three one six five in order to update C and B and liquor licensing locations requirements.
I'll second.
Councilor Renard has made a motion to, um. Pass ordinance three one six five. And Councilor Hanson has seconded that motion. Any concerns about this? All right, hearing none, all some papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right. The Peddler's License Ordinance Amendment, ordinance number three one six six. Go ahead, Dustin.
I've been working in the city clerk's office and, um, it's nice to have a vendor. He works for us so she can challenge every assumption I have regarding peddlers. And that was very useful because, uh, I think we did a pretty good job of going back and forth. On developing this. She listed to me some of her frustrations serving in other towns and things of that nature. So, I don't know, I'm really happy with the product and. And of course, Patrick reviews everything I do. But, um, basically we're just trying to modernize it, account for challenges that I've ran into with the past to try and enforce some of the things they sidewalk say, these things I need to, I want to be business friendly. Not business, business. So we tried to really. Account for all those lessons learned because I want to enforce the law, but we wanna make sure that the law is fair and encourages the type of stuff where you. Um, and as we put in the background, it said it removes the rest term requirements. No, wait, wrong one, sorry. But as it states, as it states, we are just updating definitions. We added special provisions for minors and nonprofits. We removed the provisions on sidewalks. Use to remain consistent. Um, I don't know, I just felt like it was a good product. Just updating and making it more friendly.
Yeah, peddlers is also an inherent kind of, the C and B where society's kind of changed relatively quickly. And in fact, the fact that we have to use the word peddler. Kind of strange that we don't have a better word for it, but the idea of mobile businesses and mobile vendors is kind of not something that happened for a hundred years and now it is again. So we're just trying to have a plan.
Let's turn around and make a motion to approve ordinance thirty one sixty six to amend the peddler's licensing procedures.
I'll second.
Counselor, uh, Hanson's made a motion to approve the Peddler's License Ordinance Agreement, order number thirty one sixty six, and Counselor Andrew has seconded that motion. Any issues with this? All right, hearing none, all some papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Charter Ordinance. Twenty seven, amending the appointment or removal of officers. Go ahead, Patrick.
Sure. So this one, I, I will have to take some background information and just kind of jitter a lot and I'll. I can, I'll warn you, I can tend to geek out about this kind of thing. So I will try and make it. Relevant and interesting without taking too much time. Uh, I had a council member after the last meeting ask me if it was possible legally to change our system where the mayor doesn't make appointments anymore. And I said that, yes, I believe it was. So I called the lady and completely missed values and confirmed that, yes, there is a process. It's a charter ordinance process and that's what we have laid out here. So the background information. In Kansas, the Kansas Constitution says it creates cities. Uh, it's what they call, when you hear people talking about home rule and the constitutional amendment, it says that cities have our own form of government and we have less tied. We are not tied to the state nearly as directly as, say, county government. We have a lot more freedom to choose how we structure our government. So when the state, when that constitutional amendment passed, they said, okay, it was kind of like saying cities create your own governments. That created a fair amount of confusion because like over three hundred cities, maybe six hundred, I can't remember, I just removed it earlier. And so to rein in the confusion, the legislature passed a series of different statutes that are kind of like, uh, customizable templates. If you want to think of it that way, for city government, they said, hey, if you're this size of city, you're a first class city and here it is. Second class, this size and this it rules. Third class, which is what Elsworth is, here it is rules. And they really are customizable because you could be a third class city like we are and not have an administrator, or you could choose to have one. You can do a city manager government. Uh, you can have a eight council, a eight member council that has districts where everyone's neighborhood goes. There's all sorts of different ways you can, uh, structure government. So that's kind of background. The way Elsworth is structured is kind of the, we took the template and we didn't mess with it very much. So in our system of government, every year in May, the mayor appoints or reappoints, uh, city officers. And then the council votes to approving. One of the problems that I've always. Concerned me lately in terms of employing a lot is a lot of those city officers are also city employees. And a non-renewal of the clerk, the treasurer, this chief of police would also be taken out to a, to a termination. Which could, which could happen very suddenly without due prob, without. Employee due process, without warning, without all the usual things you can do and evaluate employee. So it's always made me nervous that you get this twenty year old city, twenty, is employing the city for twenty years. And they get sideways with the mayor for whatever reason, good or bad, and just all of a sudden they don't get reappointed. So I have had a problem with the structure of this for a long time. Uh, notwithstanding full disclosure, the city attorney is also one of the people that's appointed, so that factors into it. But my main reason to draft this was because I would ask to. All that aside, if you adopt this, it's a charter ordinance, it hasn't been published twice, there's a sixty day wait period. Uh, legally citizens can petition against it, but it to a vote, is how that works. Rarely happens, but it could happen. Um, and then it goes into effect. Um. Marianna, is there anything else that you could think of that I left off that you helped me edit?
Don't think so.
Yeah, questions?
Yeah, um, so there's no secrets. I was the one that asked Patrick to check into this to see how other cities take care of their appointments. Uh, this I would see would be the fairest way and the less controversy about any appointments within the city. Uh, Dustin, Patrick, people on different boards, someone could come up to one individual saying, hey, I want that person on the board. And maybe that's not best for the board, so you could appoint that person to the board. This way, when we do different board employees, different city employees, the whole council. Has a share in that and that helps keep the liability and, uh. Blackmailing, might say, not that we have that, but. Personal grievances or blackmail, whatever, out of the equation. So I'd like to make a motion. That we approve the new charter ordinance twenty seven for the appointment removal of officers.
Okay, I have some questions before we continue.
Well, I would, if there's a second, usually you have discussion out there.
My second thing.
Yeah, discussion. So real quick, I don't think this includes the boards. This is just city officers, right?
I just wrote this one for city officers.
Right, so library board and all that's just, so.
Okay, okay, so go back to, you know. I narrowly tailored this because I think messing, changing the city's system of government is something I take extremely seriously. Uh, so again, could. Maybe we can charter, we can do a lot of charters and change a lot of things. And I'm not saying not to, I did, I did, I did this as. Narrowly tailored and I wanted to point out also. Yeah, it's a deviation because the mayor, we no longer need the process, but we aren't completely upending this, the status quo. In fact, we still would have city officers. Some cities don't even have a city op, you know, we still have all the same structure in place. It just removes it from the hands of one person and kind of keeps it to the whole council. So not a huge change.
I'd like to make an amend, amend to my, uh, motion that it takes all city and all appointments. Through different organizations throughout the city. I like it to include everything.
Patrick, you might want to check with the state library system on that one. I, I asked them about it and they said, mm, I'm not sure about that.
Fine, if we can't do it on that, that's fine then. But overall, we have a lot fairer. Approach to this situation than what we have right now.
Library, I, I won't even, I, I could talk to you guys about libraries for ten minutes because there's like, there's like five or ten different ways to form a library. Maybe the Elsworth. System is a city library, so it probably would apply to us the way it would to some library.
I don't want to say it's not good or bad on the library. If that's the way it is, I understand, we'll just go with it. But this way it gets. All of us equal opportunity and everything, it gets their input into the decisions.
But I'm not part of that.
No, the city council is.
So you've taken it completely out of my hands. Like, I'm not even part of the. Appointing process at all. Like, you didn't list it as governing body, which doesn't, aren't most of our ordinance of governing body?
Yeah, most of ours are governing bodies.
So you're, you're specifically, you know, for a fact, you can say this one's just city council.
Yes.
Wouldn't it make more sense to have everybody on it?
You don't have a vote.
To do it all.
You don't have a vote.
No, I do on this one. I do on this one. Yes, I do. Don't I?
Yes.
See?
This one would be charter ordinance.
I have a lot.
On this.
Well.
I'm, I'm gonna expand a little bit because I had to ask Patrick for clarity. Um, as I was drafting this, the way that the current code is written. The mayor gets to recommend somebody and then council can only vote on who the mayor recommends. This. Makes it open to where you guys have a say outside of just a specific person.
But it takes me away from having a say. So Mr. Panzer's saying, I wanna make it fair, but this takes me completely out of it.
And to keep it fair, if you remember, but, uh, three months ago. Uh, I believe the mayor said, I am not gonna reappoint Dustin at this time and I'm not gonna reappoint Patrick.
It's back in May. What, I was entitled to do that.
You were, but you held that over our heads and so this way it makes it.
But I'm saying, you know, I'm just, I'm just challenging, you're saying, let's make it fair where everybody can do this, but I'm excluded. That's not everybody.
Well, I think it's true that you're excluded and the question is whether or not that's fair.
That's right. That's right.
But I don't think, I mean, that's.
Let me ask you, hold on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Eke out with you, ready? How many times have you seen it where a mayor doesn't appoint? I looked through about every single attorney general question I could find and it kind of goes in this black hole. Where the council. Won't vote for that person, right? It just goes with this endless.
It goes into an endless.
Endless thing. I never ever found the end result where somebody got let go or anything. I never found this. So I was like, what kind of process is this? Do you, have you ever found that end result, ever?
The ages of meetings I've researched on it don't have a big end of the process, but mayor, in my opinion, this is just my opinion. Uh, that is a, that is not above this change. That, that is a reason to do it because we just have this endless uncertainty of, we don't know. And I have seen other governments, not this one. Where the mayor and council didn't agree and they either had to negotiate or have animosity. And so this, I mean, one thing it does clearly, uh, whether it's fair or not, equity is always very difficult. To be determined, especially because of your viewpoint, but it does give us clarity. It will be one hundred percent clear.
Right.
Who's who. And I, I think in my, my opinion again, that would be beneficial for the government, for the city of Elsworth to know exactly who our officers are and not have some. Limbo period where this person doesn't let this person, these guys do. It's just, it's, it could create a mess.
Right.
I also, I also think that that will help us in recruiting potentially a new administrator.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm saying, I'm not opposed to the whole thing. I'm not opposed to changing our whole government. I'm not opposed to me being the last mayor ever. I mean, I'm not opposed to that. I think we are moving down that path. And so I think the community has to go, hmm. You know, is this what we want to do? I mean, so I, I, I guess my, my, uh. Reservations are, what about the next person? They may want this job. I like that, I like that power. I'll tell you why. I think it's a checking balance. I really do. I think, I understand it's confusing. It would be hard to use it. It would be hard to use it, but I do like what you're saying. I would just ask you to say. The entire governing body, I would only be one person with influence over those appointments. These five would have the vote.
But we have had an incident where you wouldn't listen to us for like library board. You weren't gonna listen.
And that was really smart too. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
But that's what I'm saying. You're saying it's not fair, but we ran into the same thing. We had differing opinions and it wouldn't have mattered what our opinions were. You had already chosen who you were gonna nominate before we ever got, you came in here and said, this is what I'm doing.
That was the process that we had, correct?
Right, but it's.
No, it won't be, right. It won't be now.
Right.
I don't know what the difference is. That wasn't really fair because we didn't agree, but you got to make the final.
But you, you had a chance to vote on it. I think you went three two.
I think we have a motion to vote on.
I second that. Yeah, so can Patrick, real quick? So what's the percentage of people say, hey, we don't like this at all. We don't like the fact that we're moving down the path of never having a mayor again. What's the percentage in the petition?
From the public?
Yeah.
I don't have a, I think I wanna say five percent off the top of my head, but it's, I didn't go all the way through to find out.
Yeah, I think it's ten percent. So ten percent of the voting population. That's not hard, that's not hard to do. So. Then an election has to occur. Who pays for the election?
I believe the city would have to pay for it specially.
So if the city doesn't pay for it, then what happens?
If there's no election, then it wouldn't, then the ballot, we go back to this currency.
It would fail, right? Well, what's the cost of an election in Elsworth?
I haven't talked to the clerk about what that would be.
That, I think that's an important factor. Like, like you said. I doubt we'll do it. So I like the fact, let's just get it over with, but those are facts the public may want to know because if you go through the petition. And it's like, okay, we want fifteen grand for an election. I'd say this group's not gonna pay for it and dies right there.
It could be, or if, if that's what happens. Now that's a, every time any city does a charter ordinance, they have to wait and see.
Okay.
No, I'm not quite that.
I'm sure you're ahead.
Uh, if they're not quite, then they have to, uh, wait and see and then decide if there's a special election. What, what they have to give.
I think the amount is five thousand, if I remember correctly.
Uh, oh, I know, yeah, that's why I didn't give a quote because I don't like to talk. And it's a relatively small election. It would just be within the city of Elsworth.
Right, yeah. So now, moving into the, into the future. What happens if we want to change the charter ordinance back? What happens?
As a charter ordinance, they were doing this one.
The same thing.
Yeah.
So is it a hundred percent guaranteed if they kind of move this to. Um, form a government, hundred percent guaranteed we can move back? It's not, is it?
I'm gonna churn it. I won't give you a hundred percent guarantee on any.
Right, no, right. But you see what I'm saying?
I mean.
There's risk.
No spare way to get.
I agree, but I'm saying there's risk.
Well, we have seen liability in many things.
There's also a risk with, with maintaining the status.
Correct, yeah.
I think that's probably what the council's considering.
Right, yeah.
I have a motion on the board. Have a second?
Segment that? All right, so we're gonna do a, the roll call vote, Arianna, is it a?
Um, well, right now our motion is to amend. The original motion to include boards.
Yes, yes, every, everyone.
And that one's just an amendment, so that's just a.
So you're asking for to vote on whether or not to amend the original motion?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So you'd have to do two votes in a row.
Am I voting on the amendment?
No.
Okay. Hey, all right, hearing none, all some papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we got it.
All right.
So we passed the amendment. Now we're doing the other vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that that would include all appointments within the city.
Well, we're, we're already approved, you're, so now, do you hear to call your vote on the.
Oh, okay, on that, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I thought we had to do two.
It's, it's a two thirds.
Mary, amend the roll call, so this.
Yeah, I'm, yeah. Um, two, two thirds, roll call. Mayor does get to vote. Dorothy, I'm. Don.
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Jessica, I stand.
No.
Kevin?
Aye.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you, counsel.
That is.
Um, that's it on that.
Okay, very good.
Trying to see what's the next one.
Planning and zoning commission vacancy.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Patrick. Thank you, Patrick. All right, planning and zoning commission vacancy. Uh, agenda item report twenty four dash two forty three.
Yeah, Delvin and I received a resignation letter on December fourth, Marion Morton resigning from the partnership.
So you fill that. So council, you're gonna have to fill that position.
Who's Marion Morton?
He is a gen, he was a gentleman that was on the planning commission.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so you have a name or you're gonna need some time to get a bit of it.
Don't you have to wait the sixty days?
Yeah, we have to wait sixty days.
Yeah, don't think.
Dan can make an appointment, yes, for the next sixty days, right?
Well, no.
No.
He would make it, if, until the sixty days is past, you're in your current system of government.
Oh, that's right, we're not even close. Plus.
Yeah, yeah.
Plus you get it put in the paper, so it's at least, paper comes out on Wednesday, so it's next Wednesday, it's six one days from that Wednesday.
Yeah, it will be sometime in March.
March, good.
So until then, until then, your appointments don't end the sixty day, this appointment doesn't end at that time. It's, it's a, it's a whole normal appointment. It's like switch. So here, during your current system of government, until you're not.
Here we go, sounds good. All right, so we're done with that one. That's just, we have to accept it, vote on it?
No, but if you have someone you would like to nominate.
Not at the present time, no. He did tell me about it, so.
Did we split, um, this, the, the C and B renewals?
Um, yeah, okay. All right, going right back to the annual C and B renewals. Uh, Marianna, do you wanna look through that list?
Um, we have Jeans, Heartland, Ampride. The Legion and Coaching Four, Bowling Lane, Gambinos, front of the board that we have. That's, that's it with our last. Ordinance. And so, um, Ampride eligible. And they've all passed their inspections according to Penny and Jeffrey. So they're good to go. If you guys are ready, then they're going.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the annual C and B renewals for Coaching Four, Ampride. Jeans, Heartland, I G A and the American Legion.
I'll second.
Councilor Renard has made a motion. Counselor Johnson has seconded that motion for the annual C and B renewals for Coaching Four. Ampride, Jeans, Heartland, I G A and American Legion. Any issues there? All right, hearing none, all some papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, department head summary, city inspector. Any, any summary, come on up, Del.
The only guy I have is, uh. On that. That house on Third Street that you're giving his, uh. he called his tax, his uh, tax money back on, if he gets cleaned up by the end of the year. Is uh the foundation, since it's on a basement, can he leave that? Or is that after he taken out two in order for him to give his money back? If it's a basement, I can see making it get rid of, just seeing that pad, I wanted to know. You guys on that?
Yes, again, resell the carpet, you want to get a job?
Well, as near as I know, he wants to put another building on that pad, but that's not mine either, so.
I'd say leave it for me, one of them. Yeah, it's, it looks a lot better than it did before, pal.
So if it's ever they've cleaned it out.
Yeah, and I did notice that uh, a shout out to the Elvis, they did get the trailer house tore down and removed. So thanks for working on that, keep it on that, and thanks to the Elvis for cleaning that up.
Makes you persistent, still.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
And the car will be moved definitely.
That was the police.
But it's still.
That it?
That's it.
Thank you, Delwin.
All right.
All right, fire chief.
Good evening, I've got two things to bring before the council. Uh and I'm busy with Dustin and also Angela. Uh well, in my budget, my approach has been uh to approach the year knowing that we can incur some pretty heavy expenses early on. So I work really hard to save my money towards what I'm planning for, and as you know, we bought that Emmett. Uh earlier this year, we had it completely operational, we tried to salvage the old tank that's on it. And my goal was to get a tank, so one of the things that I'm coming to this evening with is I've got a quote um from McDonald's Tank out of Great Bend to put fiberglass tank, uh build us a four thousand gallon fiberglass tank to put on that. Um they're about a third the money of the poly tanks, and that's twenty years ago, that's everywhere they put on, they don't do as many of them now, but they are considerably cheaper. So I have to provide the valve for, um for the dump valve, um which is the ability, first off, to run very quickly. Uh but between the dump valve and their quota, it's just about fifteen thousand dollars. Um and there again, I have one, that, that was the first item that I have for you. And then the second item, um doing the same thing, and just the way I personally run my own stuff, um is we have, we're standing in Angela Police Track, and we have one payment that's left on the area that we paid ahead last year. Um the payment is not actually due until twenty five, I would like to pay for that out of this year's budget, it's sixteen thousand and change. Did you ever find these?
It's actually less than sixteen.
Okay, that's even better, yeah. Um I would like to pay that off. Main reason of it is, is obviously we have goals uh trying to, you know, we're looking for trucks, we're looking for gear that are very, very expensive. I want to have that, I have the money in the budget to do it. Um I'm still welting the budget, but those are overlooked, my amount of dust is now. So those are the two requests that I have for you this evening.
Yeah, I guess I did review it with Angela and I, he has what, done his budget, one is for sixteen, one is for less than fif- fifteen?
So do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we accept both proposals from Ralph, Fire Chief, for the, the tank and pay off their ladder truck.
So one's for fifteen thousand and one's for sixteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand, one's for sixteen thousand.
I'll second that. All right, Counselor Panzer has made a motion for the fire truck, one's for fifteen thousand, one's for sixteen thousand. Counselor Renard has seconded that motion. Any debate, any concerns? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, Ralph, while you're up here, uh I understand we handled a lumberyard fire last Friday night. I went into the lumberyard where I used to work, of course, that next Saturday morning, threw everything. All I heard when I was up there is how great you guys did up there, and how thorough and how efficient our fire department was. And they answered it. In the most professional way, and they weren't afraid to ask for backup and help. And Jaren, the manager of the lumberyard, says, I cannot say one negative thing about the way that was handled that night. He had nothing but praise for the alter target. And that makes me proud to be on city council, to know that our patrons respect our fire department that much. Because without a good fire department, we could not afford to insure our houses here in town, believe me. ISO rating would be through the roof. And having a good fire department keeps all of our property taxes down, I hope a lot of people realize that. But there's a rating that you pay on your taxes, and that's a direct response to how good of a fire department we have, so shout out to you, Ralph.
I appreciate that. All right, thank you, Ralph. Um no golf, I don't see golf. Um Chief Penny, wanna come on up?
Uh really, the only thing I got to inform you on was about the car on the building, I got in touch with the property owners. Uh they said that person was completely gone, checked out, there was no registration on the vehicle. Clearly was abandoned there. Our law allows us to go in and tow it if we get permission from the property owners. And the property owners, since they're out of state, said they have a lot of people going and tow it at the owner's expense, so we got to move.
You see that, my civil car is gone?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's gone.
Good.
Yes. Back to that human trafficking, stalking, all that stuff, have you run across that here, or?
Not since I've been here, no.
Right.
Okay. Having a way to live, had a little more, but not, not since I've been here.
Right, I know it exists in larger towns.
Correct, well, it exists everywhere.
Right.
I mean, I worked in Bridgeport, was a little bit bigger than Elsworth, and we busted the whole vans below in there.
Right.
Trafficking and stuff, so it's, it's everywhere, and I'll venture to say with uh seventy being so close as it is, we got it coming through here.
Got it. Okay, thank you, thank you, appreciate it, yeah. All right, Ronnie, did you, was he here? I don't see him, not here, okay. Um is Troy here? I don't see him, okay. Um Dave? Nothing, okay. Oh, you want to come on, come on up, Dan. No Dave, Dave, okay, okay. Um city attorney, Patrick, if you have anything?
Uh, open please.
Please to tow the car, but Capital Life will work on that ordinance that allows it to tow cars back a few months ago, the Asian Road Passes. Secondly, I want to tell you guys, uh I am getting in the process of, just so you don't read it in the paper first, there's a quiet title petition I'm gonna file. Um I have it drafted, I think it's set for yet, for a good car that like ten years ago was left in the care of our police department, and we can't find the owners, and we can't do anything with it, so you'll see that in a while, we're gonna be in soon. And then the third thing I did want to bring up, um tonight you guys passed a charter ordinance, obviously. I am a proponent of Elsworth taking a very hard and good look at your system of government. We all have our own biases. I am not a fan of the third class city government in Kansas. Uh I, in my opinion, some of the conflict that we've had has been because we have overlapping authority between the mayor and administrator, and it will not inevitably lead to conflict, but is a potential source for conflict. Um and so, however, I don't, there's a lot of different options. I've had some people who work in government suggest second class cities, some say mayor, uh manager, council, all sorts of things. I don't think, I, it's not my role to tell you guys, hey, here's the system of government. But I do think as we go forward, either with an interim or consultant, or even just on your own, talking to people, learning more about what other options there are, and maybe getting us into something that can be more attractive to staff that would work here, and also hopefully just kind of uh more efficient, better service for the city. So while we're talking about charter ordinance, and everyone's kind of thinking about this thing, we never do, I just wanted to make that point, that's all.
I have a question on interim, do you have any setup, any dates for interviews for any?
There, there is a meeting set up. Uh that individual, I haven't asked permission to divulge the name of the potential interim, but there is something scheduled with that person. Um so unfortunately, with the way the meetings fall this month, um it didn't, it wasn't able to do that because of this meeting. There's a possibility that if things went really well, we might call and request a special meeting, but I don't know that yet.
Okay.
But we will definitely, you guys.
Well, thank you for working on that.
Stay. You're welcome, and, and everyone else will work on that, too, so. All right, thank you, guys.
Well said, thank you. Um city clerk, did you have anything?
Yeah, yes, well, doesn't. We, the, the, the city is going to hold a going away farewell celebration for Dustin at the golf course on December nineteenth. Um from four to six, it's open to the public, it's come and go, we'll have refreshments, um everybody's invited to come attend. Um and just share your memories, um wish him well, so that's the public plug for that. Um you'll see some flyers um around town, some businesses, um there's something going in the newspaper, we have it on Facebook, um so just, we, we want to invite everybody to come out and send Dustin off positively.
Maybe else? Thank you. All right, city minister, Dustin?
Thank you. It has been one, it has been a wonderful experience, I appreciate all.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, it is. Okay, uh city council, Tyra? No, I ain't got nothing. Okay, Jessica? Aaron? Done?
Yep. Now, before I say this, I'm not crazy. I have a friend, and everybody knows one of my best friends. During Halloween, he had a armadillo dead in the street in front of this house. And he thought, wow, a dead armadillo. A week later, he goes out and there's a dead goose laying in the street in front of his house. I said, I won't say his name, I said, go out and check it, see if it's been shot. See if it's harmed or endangered, and he went and looked at it, without thinking, he picked it up and went and discarded it. Lo and behold, last night on the news, and this is for Dave, out the lagoons. If anyone in town or in the county finds any dead geese, do not touch them, do not handle them. They're bird flu, or it's around Kansas City, Topeka area, moving this way. And we're probably gonna see more dead geese, and the way I understood it, I investigated it. The geese can fly, and then all of a sudden, it's like a cardiac arrest, and they just fall to the ground. And I hope that's not what happened in front of Alan's house. My friend's house, okay, it's Allen's party, yeah, y'all know anyway, so. But anyway, I called him, he said.
Oh, that goose.
Yeah, he saw that goose, and he said, you're not effing me, are you? And I says, no, it's true. And he looked it up, and yes, there's bird flu, and it's attacking the geese. So if anyone does have them land in their yard on their property, notify the city, and we can notify KDHE about it because I'm sure they'll want to examine that goose to see if it has bird flu. And it sounds like a far-fetched idea, but it sure makes you think when you find one of them dead laying in the street here in town.
That's all.
He saw on the news today, too.
Yeah.
So I just want to make everybody aware of that. And I don't know if humans can transmit the disease to themselves from touching the goose. But for some reason, it's affecting the bigger birds right now, the geese. So uh as concerned citizen, just be aware of the situation, and report it to the city, and then we'll contact KDHE. I don't know if they'll want it for forensics or autopsy or whatever they do, but at least we'll know.
Be careful of your Christmas goose.
Yeah, I mean, go get a Christmas goose, yeah. So anyway, I know it sounds kind of like I'm way out there, but we've got to be careful. Okay, that's all I have.
Darcy?
Can you beat that one?
So I've, I've held on to this for a long time. I've go to this Kansas Farm Bureau Leadership Program, and a lot of kids hit me up all the time, like, we want to own chickens, we want to own chickens. And I thought, well, it is a complicated thing, they had problems in Conopolis, they do it in Salina. Um it's a controversial subject, and I thought, well, this might be a good project for me to go in there, start talking to people who are successful at it, and, and how do we present it to council where they would say, yes, let's do it. But I guess the general thought would be, we'd use the money from the chickens to pay for the stray cats. We, we would administratively, from the fees that we get from whatever those are, those chickens, and it could be other different animals, too, that citizens could, could own, we'd use the money, the revenue from that to help with the cats, because right now, we're just not taking care of the cats. So pretty complicated thing, a lot of movement parts, what happens when the person, you know, comes into city hall and they go, hey, I want a permit? Who goes out there and checks things? How does the money flow? It's not that simple. But at least I've got a year to um, you know, to basically research it, put it all together, and put it in front of council in a way that kind of makes sense, and it takes care of that cat problem, we, people constantly have come up here. And we did, we've not funded it, we've not had a solution, and I just thought, you know what, let's see if we can kind of do this all in one fell swoop, so. Uh that's all I'll be working on in this next year.